I'm calling the Riverside Township Board of Trustees meeting to order. Please rise and trustee Carol, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Dropka, would you please call a roll?
Trustee Carol.
Present.
Trustee Clark.
Present.
Trustee Heilenbach.
Present.
Supervisor Wilt.
Present.
Let the record note that Clerk Dropka is in attendance and trustee Blau is absent.
Thank you very much. We have the minutes of our last, well, before we get started, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I'd like to move number C, the grant under unfinished business, to, in respect for our visitors.
Okay. I have a motion to move the unfinished business item C up earlier on the agenda. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
I have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, now we have the minutes of the November 9th Board of Trustees meeting in our packets. What is your pleasure?
I wrote them. I don't think I can make a motion to approve them.
I'm motion to accept the minutes of November 9th.
And they are quite comprehensive.
And I apologize when I was reading them for the formatting.
Oh, no, thank you. I have a motion to accept the minutes. Do I hear a second? I will second because I was here. Okay. So we have a motion and second to accept the minutes of the November 9th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
I abstain.
Thank you.
As I was not at that meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. So noted. Why don't we, before we go to communications, why don't we call on the Riverside Brookfield High School folks regarding the grant application? And that is under unfinished business in your packets. And if you would please introduce yourselves and just tell us briefly what it is that you need.
So my name is Brittany Berent. I am the school nurse at Riverside Brookfield High School.
My name is Julia Crockett. I'm the nurse assistant at Riverside Brookfield High School.
So we are asking a grant for just new office furniture and new desks, and that's pretty much it. Our office is a little outdated right now. We've tried to use other things, but it just does not flow and it's all outdated. We're trying to utilize our room to where it's more of easy access to things, like we're trying to use our office for a vision and hearing room instead of sometimes we have to find a random room in the whole school. So obviously with our budget, COVID, it's kind of taken a toll because now we have to do COVID testing and we've been having pickups for biohazard and all that stuff. And of course, it comes out of our budget. Sorry to take you on.
No, that's right. So it's more of an easy access for staff and students to where we can both be upfront when they do come in. Right now, we're kind of separated. The room where she's in now, we would like to use that for vision and hearing. We have to do that per the state every year. And it's, it is hard when you're trying to find a quiet area. So that would be ideal for us, but just to be able to find the furniture and the things to do that is not always so easy.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board?
I have a question for Supervisor Wilt. You know, we have Riverside Brookfield has already, you know, had a grant here in 2022. Would that take care of their grant requests for the rest of the year?
We have, up to now, we have allowed two grants per year.
Right.
We don't have a hard and fast amount on it, but that is based on availability of funding.
Right.
Is that a calendar year or our fiscal year?
It's typically, we figure it on our fiscal year.
Fiscal year, yeah.
Even though our grant times are obviously calendar based.
So you don't have any money in the budget for new desks and chairs?
We've had to spend a lot of it on like bandaging, all our stuff. It's pretty much goes to the whole school. We probably only have like 500 left on our budget so far.
Okay.
And for the rest of the year, and we still have to like reorder.
And the school doesn't have a desk or chairs laying around that you guys could use?
We tried. It's just very outdated and it's very old. We just have random desks and chairs all over. We just wanted it to look more a little professional and have it updated.
You're looking at like a reception station here.
Yeah, that's what we would like to have. Because right now, it's just kind of separate and then every time she's not there, I just have to keep walking in and out rather than me being out there. So it's kind of more about organization and the fluidity of things.
Well, all I can say is, is I think that we can absolutely spend more of our money better than on a desk and chairs for the high school. That's just my opinion. I think that the high school has a lot of tax dollars in there. And we, I have no problem when it comes to security or other things that the high school, but it's a desk and chairs. And I just can't believe that they don't have any money in that budget, but the amount of taxes that they charge all the residents to buy, buy the nurse's office, which is very busy, I'm sure, a desk and chairs. That's just my opinion. I welcome anybody else's comments.
Have you had the opportunity to approach the, the board or the administration about any of this?
So we've talked to our supervisor and he's the one, many times, and he's the one that told us, oh, go see if you could get a grant from them. So we're like, okay. Usually our supervisor, I mean, other supervisors would do it for them, but we're put in everything. Like we always have to salvage for ourselves. So I mean, I'm more than willing to definitely go ask, go to the board, our board, and see if we could do it. We just don't know how, that was just what we were told to do pretty much.
Yeah.
So right now, we kind of have a desk with two tables, just that I found in storage on the sides to make a U. There's no stor, you know what I mean? It just looks very unprofessional. So when we have parents come in, it's just a little bit embarrassing where you're trying to, you know, show that we care about our office, but that's what we're given. We go downstairs, we look at storage, we find what we can, and that's what's there.
And with this, I'm sure that the school got some extra money for COVID relief and such too. It seems that if your, if your tasks have increased, there should have been some money that should have funded exactly that.
I agree 100%.
I understand the, the problem here.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Well, entertain a motion if anybody wants to make one.
I'll make a motion not to award this grant to RB.
Well, I think, aren't we supposed to just do a motion to, you know, put the grant forward? Or can you just make a motion to not award the grant?
I think it's within your discretion to do either, make either motion. Ms. Vaila.
To deny the grant, basically.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Heilenbach, to deny the, the grant requested by Riverside Brookfield High School. Any further discussion?
No, well, yes. I think I see where trustee Heilenbach is coming from. I'm going, like, what did you say initially? Like, would it be a different result if they were coming and asking for, like, were you asking for, did you blow your budget? I don't mean to be prejudiced, but did the money leave your budget for nurse-related items like bandages and medicines and whatever that would be?
Yes.
Is that a better application? Or is that, does that still tickle your?
Well, I mean, I, I don't, without getting personal with you guys.
No.
How much is your budget?
Less than $2,700.
Okay, so how many bandages are, you're spending, let's say 2,500 on bandages. What, what else? I mean, they, don't they give you any other equipment?
Last year, last year, we had to buy out of our own equipment, out of our own budget, an audiometer because we do vision and hearing. We had to do that. That was $1,100. But then coming up on this budget, it's not just Band-Aids. We have to supply not only that, like contact solution, wax for this, I mean, it's anything, you know, gauze, blood stuff. We did not realize that they were charging us, that we had a pickup for biohazard. That's, they're charging us whether they pick up or not.
$65.
So it goes against your budget?
Yes. Everything is on our budget. Every little thing that we do is our budget.
Your budget is only $2,700?
For a 1,700, 1,700 student school, yes.
I think you need to go to the board and ask.
Yeah, I think, that's exactly mine. Like, I, it doesn't, that number doesn't.
But is this portrayed that it's a lot? But when you think we're supplying every single teacher, PE, everybody with Band-Aids and, you know, oh, I, you know.
Are there any over the counter medications? I mean, aspirin type things or anything like that?
We can't provide that.
You can't.
You don't purchase that.
Right.
Which are just mints, you know, for nausea, you know, just things like that.
Right.
Like I said, that all comes from our budget.
And I'm sure you have to have like PPE. You have to have gloves and masks and things like that.
And all that, as you know, has gone up a lot because.
Of the demand.
Well, gloves especially. Gloves. A lot of the thing, yeah.
So maybe like 100 to like 300 bucks for like 10.
You had to pay $400 for a thermometer.
Yeah, I mean.
Because you couldn't find them.
I think, you know, you're giving us all these examples of, you know, bandages, to trustee Carol's point, you know, the hearing and vision testing machine. That I could get behind.
Yeah. That's what I thought you were getting at.
A desk and chairs is really, to me, almost a luxury. It's a basic need that the school should provide for you.
Yeah.
I agree.
But if you had a, a piece of equipment that you needed or, or something that, safety or PPE or any of that, I would absolutely consider that. But a desk and chair is just not, in my opinion.
Well, that's okay. We totally understand.
But I think they should expand your budget from 2,700, at least give you $5,000. I mean, it's, to me, that's a little ridiculous and you should go to your, the school board. Honest.
I mean, and we're, we're very good with that. Like, we don't just shop at one place. Like, I literally go through books and books to try to get the best.
I believe you do.
No, I don't, that's not our point.
20, I'm just saying, you know, even with that, it's like, we don't just.
Right.
Just back at the envelope, to your point, 1,700 people and a $2,800 budget, I mean.
It's comical.
I'm only running a, you know, a school of four at home and.
You go through the.
I'm going through a lot more than that if it were 1,700, so, yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Wow.
Do we, we need to vote?
We need to vote, yes. So clerk Dropka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Carol.
This is for the not award.
Motion to the board.
Aye. For all the reasons that trustee Heilenbach was.
Trustee Clark.
Aye.
Trustee Heilenbach.
Aye.
Supervisor Wilt.
Aye.
Can you have that come back to me again? I'm confused. That's a negative motion, right?
It's a negative, it's to not fund this.
Then I'm an aye, yes, thank you.
Yes.
Can we?
You voted to not fund this, yes.
Four to zero, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for having me.
Sorry, please, please take the message back to your board and your, and your, yes.
Letter to the editor.
If you'd like me to talk to them, let me know.
Right.
Yeah, and I get it. I totally get it. When I flip through that, I'm like.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, let's get back to the beginning of the agenda. Are there any communications?
Yes. We've got one from the RCG board, Ellen Rosenwinkel, thanking us for the funds for the Riverside Community Garden and wishing us a wonderful holiday season. And then I have one from the Riverside Chamber of Commerce thanking us for our sponsorship of the Holiday Stroll.
Okay.
Which was a ton of fun, by the way.
Yes, it was very nice, very nice. Okay, thank you. We have no public for public comments, so we'll move on to the supervisor's report. Although slowly, tax funds have started to be distributed to us as of last Friday. I haven't had to take any tax anticipation loans so far. And as of today, we have collected $20,204 and change from the second installment taxes for 2021, and we earned one cent in interest from, from the treasurer's office. On the Monday after Thanksgiving, Andrew and our, on our staff observed a patch of the east facing roof of the town hall, had a patch of missing tiles. He took pictures and I immediately sought out companies to make repairs before serious winter weather. Research and recommendations yielded three companies. The one we last used for repairs would not schedule anything until spring. Second one referred me to a specialty department within their company who never responded. And Thunderbolt Construction came back with an immediate response. A crew was in the general area, did a quick visual inspection. They sent a bid by that Wednesday and I accepted the reasonable quote, which they, and they did that, the work by that Friday. So I'm very pleased and we will certainly consider then when we, when it's time to do a full tear off.
Supervisor Wilt, wasn't that Public Works Director Tab that made that recommendation?
Yes, he did. Yes, he did.
A big thank you to him.
Thank you very much, yes.
Nice job.
Yes.
Director Tab.
Yes, thank you to Director Tab. And so that, that price, that expenditure is on the warrants tonight. Since Marjorie Iniguez, our staff member of 22 years, announced she will retire at year end, a lot of time has been dedicated to evaluating the staffing needs and recruiting applicants for a part-time position. Actually, Facebook brought us six resumes. I've had three interviews so far and I hope to hire soon so Marjorie can train on some of the things that she does exclusively. Many of the things were all cross-trained on, but there are some things that are in her, in her capabilities. The food pantry recipients have been receiving the holiday gift cards that this board approved. And so far, we have distributed 50 of those $50 cards. Rather than transferring money from general funds into the food pantry and then spending that on the cards, I simply used the business credit card and listed those under programs for now. If you see those expenditures on our expenses, that's where it has gone. If any of the cards remain at the end of the season, they will be used to purchase food for the pantry. And at that time, we can, when, we can shovel things, shuffle things around in the budgetary expenditures. Riverside Foods has generously come up with a pack the trailer benefit for our food pantry. A trailer is currently parked in their parking lot for donations this week. They even have pre-packed shopping bags full of things that when you check out, you can purchase in addition, and it goes right into that. And, and then they will bring the trailer over to the town hall once it is filled. I've heard from Peter Bozakakis that the, they may be making the delivery earlier than they expected because it's filling up very nicely. And if so, they would, they would make a final delivery on Monday, but they may even be coming out Friday this week if, if it continues as it's been going. So I thank the community and I encourage anybody who's listening tonight to please consider those contributions. It's going to be a big help. They created this event on their own. I didn't reach out to them and we are very grateful to Riverside Foods.
Nice job.
Thank you. We have a lot of activity in the building on December 2nd for the Holiday Stroll. As always, the school choral groups drew a lot of relatives and friends, and there was also a balloon twister in room four sponsored by Brian Brennan, also of the Chamber, who, and that balloon twister had people lined up at all times. I had maps of the event locations for people to follow along. We had holiday wristbands and some candy at the table by the bench here in the vestibule. And following the choral presentations, there was a magician that the township sponsored who had two shows. Both of those had quite a few attendees. And with something going on on both floors of the building, we had quite a few, quite a bit of traffic here that evening, much more than usual. I thank the Chamber for including other, other locations south of the tracks this time. The First American Bank had popcorn and some crafting. The library had Santa Claus, so we were right in the thick of it here and we had more traffic than we usually had, usually get. And it was a beautiful evening, relatively speaking. So, yeah, that was a very successful event. I was also present here in the building the following day for the mental health board's taping, and thank you to Riverside TV who, who did that, of a presentation on veterans' issues. I'm sure trustee Heilenbach will have more to say about that. I can just tell everybody that when Riverside Television releases it, I encourage you to watch it as it was very informative. And that's all I have to report, but I gladly answer any questions that you might have. Hearing nothing, then we'll go to trustees' reports. Trustee Clark, do you have anything for us?
Just at the senior exercise class is going well. I attended the state conference in Springfield, which was also very informative. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Trustee Heilenbach?
Good evening. Thank you again, Supervisor Wilt, for doing the introductions for the mental health on veterans video that we did. This is like the fifth video we've done for the community and we do get a good response from it. And we brought in a doctor from Rush, you know, Presbyterian, St. Luke's downtown, Heinz Hospital, and a, another just social worker that discussed the problems that met, or some of our veterans are facing. And that, you know, has no boundaries. It's all over. So I know that our community resource center has reached out, excuse me, has reached out to get information from them. So if we do get a veteran, we did have one veteran come in and now Susan can reach out to that veteran and say, okay, here's where you gotta go and here's the person to contact. So it was, it was very well done. I thought it was very well done. The other thing is CIT training. As you know, with the Safety Act coming in, our police departments have to be trained in CIT training, which is critical incident training. And they, this will be our second class and I think we'll fill this one up and we should be good, that will, you will be half close to in our community and our township partners 100%. So I know I talked to Public Safety Director Buckley, gave him the time. I've talked to Chief Kurvila from Brookfield. They're very excited and they're both very close. And I'm sure Christian is very close in North Riverside. So that's very important. That is something that we put out the money for because we thought it was that important, especially with the Safety Act. Other than that, as Supervisor Wilt said, we're waiting on money too, so we can catch up. And I'm sure, we have no meeting in December and we'll have a meeting in January where I'm sure we'll have a lot of business and go from there.
Very good, thank you. And you also have all the mental health board reports from the, from their last meeting in your packets. Trustee Carol, do you have anything for us?
Yes, the, as the board knows, we agreed to participate in the Cross-Community Climate Collaborative, colloquially known as C4. I am on the Health and Wellness, what I'll call the Subcommittee of that. So I think that there's going to be an opportunity for us to showcase a lot of the Health and Wellness stuff here. We do, where it's trustee Clark and the seniors, whether it's trustee Heilenbach and the Mental Health Court, whether it's you and, and the Food Bank, I think all of those can be leveraged and hopefully this will lead to partnerships or efficiencies that will help us to grow that. And then there's another part, you know, to actually work on the climate and I assume Health and Wellness will fall in there somewhere, but they do seem to have help from a nationwide group that gives suggestions on greenery and stuff. So there are members of the Park District Board on this, in this group, the Board Township. I think there's somebody from Water Rec. So hopefully we should be able to leverage this pretty well. And the first official meeting will be the last Thursday of every month, starting in January.
Okay. Thank you very much for that report. Okay, on to unfinished business. The item A on the Swinging Bridge repairs and financing, I don't have anything, any update. We don't have a contract yet with the, the vendor. I think that since it's been delayed until spring, I don't think they're, they're in a big hurry to put that together, although I know that our, our consultants have already reached out to them. I just haven't heard anything more back. In terms of financing, I hope that, now during the holidays, it's pretty rough, but I hope to sit down with the same counsel that helped us with the tax anticipation warrants to figure out some, some good ways to try to do some of the financing right after the new year. So perhaps we will be able to get Mr. Kankar to join us in, in our Committee of the Whole in January, but if not shortly thereafter, I hope to meet with him and come to you with some ideas and suggestions. Item B, we have in our packets, this is the finalized version. This is what we, we agreed to in concept. It has now been detailed and everything has been checked. And so I would now ask for a motion to adopt the 2022 levy, which will then be submitted to the county and so forth shortly after this meeting. The total levy, in the aggregate, the levy is within the 5% bounds. It comes in just a tad under 5% for all three of the levies that we have, which includes the general fund, the general assistance, and the community mental health. And what, to get to that 5%, I reduced the general assistance tax and brought more into the town tax fund so that we have a little bit more leverage on, on our expenses. So the total levy comes to $1,453,222. This does not require the, a hearing on truth and taxation, but we will fill out the forms that are necessary for that.
That's, I have a note to make sure when you file with the county that those are with it.
Right.
But you're, you're correct. You didn't need a public hearing based on the percentage adjustment that you were referring to.
Right. Okay, so what is your pleasure? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by trustee Carol to adopt the annual town tax levy for 2022. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Heilenbach. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then clerk Dropka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we've already dealt with the grant, so we are on to new business. And there is one request for a special event.
Supervisor Wilt, I thought we already approved a wedding for the, this date.
That was withdrawn.
Oh, that was withdrawn.
They, they made other arrangements or, I don't know if the wedding is still on, but they withdrew the, the request.
Oh, they was, okay.
Yes.
So then I'll make a motion to approve the special event request for film screening on February 18th of 2023.
Do I hear a second?
Do you want to adjust that to make sure that they have all, including your motion, that they have all the appropriate insurance? Because.
Yes, I will make that amendment, that, providing that they provide all the appropriate insurance.
Okay. I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Heilenbach, to approve the special use request for February the 18th, subject to their providing the appropriate insurance and other requirements. Any discussion? Hearing none, then clerk Dropka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Then we have a resolution to reappoint Mr. Joseph J. DeRozier to the Mental Health Board. He filled and. mental health board. He filled an incomplete, an uncompleted term, so now this would be for his first full term. He has agreed to serve, and I think he's been an asset to the board, so I would recommend this, so.
I make a motion that we appoint, reappoint Joseph J. DeRozier to the mental health board, and he has been an asset to the mental health board. He's real good.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion by trustee Highlandbach, seconded by trustee Carol, to reappoint Joseph J. DeRozier to the mental health board for a term commencing on January 1st, 2023, and terminating on December 31st of 2026. And if you would call a roll.
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Do you happen to know the resolution number on that?
Pardon?
Do you know the resolution number?
Um, no, but we'll fill it in as soon as we go into the office. I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Do you have one to sign, or do you want me to sign this one?
I'll sign this.
Thank you. All right. So we are up to our, the warrants, and what is your pleasure?
Trustee Highlandbach moves that the board authorizes and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant for December of 2022 in the amount of $31,802.76, as presented to the board this 14th day of December, 2022.
I have a motion by trustee Highlandbach. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second from trustee Clark. So the motion is to approve the general warrants for December 2022 in the amount of $31,802.76. Please call the roll.
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Motion by trustee Highlandbach that the board ratify and authorize the payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. The utility warrant for December of 2022 in the amount of $2,344.77. The payroll warrant for December of 2022 in the amount of $23,566.79. The health warrant for December of 2022 in the amount of $2,719.37. Grants for December of 2022 in the amount of $475. Petty cash for December of 2022 in the amount of $126.53. General assistant warrant, December of 2022, in the amount of $4,529.89. The township radio players warrant for December of 2022 in the amount of $200. And the food pantry warrant for December of 2022 in the amount of $894.12. All of the above, as presented to the board this 14th day of December, 2022.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by trustee Highlandbach, seconded by trustee Carol, to approve the following warrants for December of 2022, those being a utility warrant in the amount of $2,344.77. Payroll warrant in the amount of $23,566.79. Health warrant in the amount of $2,719.37. Grants in the amount of $475. Petty cash in the amount of $126.53. General assistance, the amount of 45, I'm sorry, $4,529.89. Radio players in the amount of $200. Food pantry warrant in the amount of $894.12. Any discussion? Then clerk Drapka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Can we go back to the general warrant? How much was that for?
You got an updated one that was in your mailbox that I bet you missed.
Oh, yes, there, you probably didn't have the Thunderbolt Construction one on yours.
Right, so did we approve it for 31, or did we approve it for 29?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Oh, we did. Okay, all right.
Yes, twelve, yeah, that, it was added on yesterday. All right, if there is no further business, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion to adjourn, seconded by, motion by Highlandbach, seconded by Carol. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Merry Christmas.